15 and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there are a number of items in the table file.
Yes, we have several items in the table file, including in items for discussion reports. We have the PowerPoint presentation from Burnsville Park for you to review as you're watching the presentation. We also have additional information for the 2014-15 audit presentation. So we have an updated copy of the executive audit and also an independent audit's report on various sections of the financial statements, including some specific information about the infamous Gazzby 68. We also basically will do a little bit of a short presentation for you on ESSA, PSSA, which is the replacement for No Child Left Behind. And I'll give you just a brief update on that. There'll be a lot more to follow as they sort out all the details of how that's going to play. Then we have some additional appointments, increase, decrease, and change in assignments. And we also have a gift agreement of $17,392 from the Northfield Wrestling Association. So a number of items that I'd like to ask that you place in appropriate places on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. I just want to mention that if there is anyone here from the community who wishes to make comments or have questions regarding the truth in taxation presentation, there will be another opportunity for you to do so after that report is presented as part of tonight's agenda. So is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. I'd like to remind the public that this is a listening opportunity for the board and not a time to debate an issue. Please step to the podium, identify yourself by giving your name and address, and if you represent a group. And we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes.
Sure. Thank you so much for allowing us to come here. I'm Marla de Cantos. I live in Sixth Fairway Drive here in Northfield. And I'm the co-chair of the Highway Two Free Six Solutions Group. And my co-chair Brenda Shelby couldn't come today. She's a nurse and she's working with her patients tonight. So we just wanted to give you an update of the actions we're doing right now after talking with Mandat and trying to resolve the issue with the school limit. We continue to work with a program called SHIP, which is statewide health improvement program. So we're talking with the SHIP coordinator for Rice County Public Health because they did in Fairville, in the intersection of Highway 21 and Lindell Avenue, they did underpasses through this program. So we're trying to bring this to Northfield to keep improving the highway because we feel that the school zone is not enough. So we keep working. We presented the same information to the city council. We have a coming up meeting with Matt Hillman here and Greg Johnnyoff. And so we keep working and we're happy to help and we're happy that the school is pushing this issue. There is a major accident waiting to happen, so we want to fix things before this happens. So thank you very much and you can always contact us if you need our help. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else here who wishes to address the board? Okay. With that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes of the regular school board meeting held on November 23rd. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff, second by Rob. Any questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on Monday, November 23rd, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'd like to move on to announcements and recognitions. To begin tonight, we'd like to welcome Steve Porter, Community Education Director for Lake ville Public Schools. He is here this evening to present community services with the Minnesota Community Education Association Outstanding Project Award. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Richardson, and members of the administration. So again, thank you very much for having me here today, but really, the pleasure is all mine to present your district, the community services division, and the coordinators here with an outstanding project award. The Minnesota Community Education Association -- I'm sorry, I didn't even say more about why I'm here. Steve Porter, Director of Community Education for the Lakeville area public schools, but I'm also a past board member of the Minnesota Community Education Association. And on behalf of the MCEA, that's why I'm here, to present this award. So the Minnesota Community Education Association is a statewide organization of community educators. It was formed in 1974, but we have grown now to be over 1,200 members. MCEA serves community educators in all parts of Minnesota, including community education directors, teachers, administrators, program coordinators, advisory council members, and members of the community. MCEA is divided into nine regions across Minnesota. Northfield is in Region 5, which extends west to Burnsville, east to Hastings, north to South Washington County, and then south to Northfield. We offer all members services in areas of professional development, job posting, legislative advocacy, legal services, and recognition, which brings me here tonight. As part of our annual recognition awards, each region is able to nominate projects that exemplify the area of community education. Projects could either be one-time events or ongoing efforts associated with a community education program. In 2015, regional project award winners were recognized at the annual conference of MCEA. But we also want to make sure that projects were recognized on a local level as well. So I'm here tonight to present an outstanding project award to Northfield Community Services for its sports special sale. Out of 339 school districts in the state, your school district was one of only six receiving this award. So a little bit more about the project. For the past two summers, Northfield Public Schools Community Services Division has offered the support special sale. This sale has truly been a collaborative effort between the coordinators within the community services division and the broader Northfield community. Throughout the summer, bins are placed throughout the Northfield community, including the community services office, school buildings where summer programming is taking place, and at the Northfield outdoor pool. And at these bins, community members are encouraged to donate their new or lightly-used athletic gear, equipment, apparel, and even bikes. In addition, emails and flyers are sent out to all the sports associations, encouraging them and their members to also donate either their new or lightly-used equipment that's no longer being used by the families. This donated equipment is then sorted and priced by the community services coordinators, who also organize the sale and staff the sale that takes place at the end of July or early August. Proceeds from the sale go directly to support the youth scholarships within the community services division and the Northfield Youth Sports Collaborative. In addition, low-income families are encouraged to visit the sale to receive gear, equipment, apparel, and bikes at greatly reduced prices. After the sale, any remaining items that are donated locally. So it is my pleasure to honor not only your school district, the community services division, but also these coordinators with the 2015 Minnesota Community Education Association Outstanding Project Award. Congratulations.
There we go.
Thank you, Steve, for being here this evening, and thank you to the coordinators on behalf of the board for their incredible work on this really unique and very worthwhile project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So on to other announcements and recognitions.
Yes, we have several others, and then I understand you also have some announcements. All good. So first of all, I should have Amy come up and do this next announcement. Northfield Middle School's student-run bookstore, Tattered Pages, is now accepting donations for the upcoming Ninth Annual Holiday Shopping Extravaganza. The Holiday Shopping Extravaganza kicks off from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Wednesday, continues during the school day until Tuesday, December 22nd. Donations are welcome at the middle school. Needed donations include gently-used books for all ages, all types of appropriate multimedia, including VHS tapes, DVDs, video games, CDs, et cetera, in their original packaging; gently-used household gift items, such as picture frames, paper, weights, stuffed animals, candles, jewelry boxes, candy dishes, puzzles, and gift wrap, bows, and bags, et cetera. The bookstore provides an opportunity for middle school students to purchase holiday gifts without spending actual money. Students earn coupons in a variety of ways, such as by donating books, working in the bookstore, completing volunteer jobs, and by settling in the classroom. Extravaganza will include free gift wrapping, holiday treats, music, and movies. And for more information, contact the Northfield Middle School Media Center, Amy Seave. All right. Excellent. We'd also like to announce that the University of Minnesota and the National Fluid Power Association have donated two bus trips, the cost of which would be about $9,000, from Northfield Lines.
$900.
Excuse me. $900 from Northfield Lines to the Northfield Middle School. It's a better trip than we thought. They're going way out there. Northfield Lines to the Northfield Middle School Technology and Engineering Department. 16 eighth-grade students, eight boys and eight girls, are taking part in a fluid power challenge. On December 8th, the students spent the day learning about fluid power, the math, the science, and the practical applications by building a lift mechanism, a rotation mechanism, and a grabbing mechanism. At the end of the day, they were given a task or game that they will then actually compete on January 26th. The students will spend time until then thinking about designing and building the machines that will compete in the game. So again, I think it's another great opportunity to expand our STEM activities and our CTE activities for our students. Third thing I'd like to announce is just information about the efforts as far as moving forward with the Thought Exchange Program. We did complete the star step of that process. We had a total of 1,104 people participate. Of those, 250 only participated in share. 483 only participated in the star step. 371 people participated in both steps. And obviously, had a significant increase in the total number of individuals participating in the star step. Overall, they collected 2,320 different thoughts, and 61,552 stars were assigned to various thoughts. So if we look at the breakdown of the individuals involved, 796 of the participants were parents or guardians, that's 72 percent of the individuals who participated. Those who were both parent, guardian, and staff were 144, 13 percent. Staff members, 142, about 13 percent. Community members, an additional 16, about 1 percent. And then students and others, less than 1 percent. So at this point now, they will be going through the analysis step. And what we'll see in January then will be, they will be coming back to us with the discovery step, which will actually present the data on all of the thoughts shared and the rankings that people gave them. So they really will identify what thoughts or ideas people are really passionate about by the number of people who've identified those as being really important ideas. And we'll be able to use that data as we move forward and work with the process. I think we're very pleased with the level of participation. Again, a real good opportunity for us to try this process out. And our hope again is to come back in the spring with another thought exchange process where we will again reach out to our community to learn about how they're feeling about various issues. So again, I thought people might want to know where that had gone in terms of the work. And again, really pleased to see the number of total people involved in the process.
Excellent, thank you. Do board members have any specific questions on the thought exchange? Okay.
I have two quick announcements. First, I wanted to welcome Max Heil this evening, representing the district youth council. It has been their goal this year to have a representative from the district youth council come to every school board meeting just to get a better sense of school issues. So we very much appreciate that you're here this night. Unfortunately, you probably pulled a longer meeting than some of your fellow district council members, but if there's homework that's calling, we would certainly understand if you would need to leave. So we want to thank you for being here. And then I also wanted to touch quickly on the Torch Poetry Slam. There's a number of board members, fellow board members, I know that were there that evening. And it was the First Annual Torch Poetry Slam where several students shared their poems. It was clearly evident, and I know, Rob, you will maybe want to have your comments as well. I mean, these kids worked super hard and did a really, really great job, and it was such a truly remarkable event. But there was a number of people involved in making that happen, so I wanted to recognize them tonight. First, Jennifer Lampart, Northfield High School's ELL teacher for spearheading this event. She received valuable assistance from two speech-writing coaches from the community, Linda Henderson and Leslie Schultz. And of course, Teddy Geldeman and Kim Horn are the district's torch coordinators. We're also in the thick of things in terms of making this a wonderful success. And then lastly, we'd like to recognize the sponsors of the event, Health Finders Collaborative, Teen Outreach Program, also known as TOP, and the Latino Play Festival. So their sponsorship was crucial in making that event happen. So it was really great, and so, yeah, it's good. Okay. So now, we can move on to item for discussion and report. First on the agenda is the Truth in Taxation presentation for the payable 2016 property tax levy, excuse me, Dr. Hillman and Matt Valmertsdorf.
I'm happy to see all of these people here. It's a record crowd for Truth in Taxation. Oh, you're here for other things, right? Okay. So we know you all look forward to this every year. We are here to try, we don't try to make light of it because this is an important piece. The Truth in Taxation presentation is an annual opportunity for community members from the district and taxpayers to hear about our tax levy in public. We also always partner with a budget update for you as well to just really take advantage of that. And tonight, of course, later, we'll also hear about the district's audit. So it's really three pieces of financial information tonight. So what we are asking you for later in the agenda this evening is certifying our pay 2016 levy. And basically, we are going to be asking to certify the exact same number that we presented you back in September. It's the maximum authority allowed by MDE for this year. And even with that, our levy at the maximum authority, we're still proposing a levy that is down $31,931.16 or 0.2 percent. We'll call it flat for all intents and purposes. Some of the reasons that the property tax levy is going down is we have paid off the 2006 capital facility bond, really a roof bond. We're also seeing a slight increase in pupil counts, which accounts for some of the increased portion. We also have an increase in the general fund revenue that's offset by these debt service, the decrease in debt service. So while we're getting a little bit less money, we actually have more flexibility than we had before with these dollars because obviously, when we sunset a capital facilities bond, that's a significant deal. And then the money that we're getting in terms of the increased general fund revenue due to the slight student increase and the new long-term facilities maintenance revenue, we have more flexibility with the dollars that we are going to be getting. And what we're asking you to certify is a levy of $15,548,102.12. There's a couple of pieces with the Truth in Taxation Committee that we are required to show you. This particular piece is to show you the difference between pay 15 and pay 16 and what we had looked at in September proposing and what we are asking you to certify tonight. You're going to notice in all cases, the numbers are exactly the same because we asked you to certify exactly what we had proposed back in September. We like this chart. It just shows a breakdown of the levy. If we notice the debt service and the referendum, those are voter-approved portions with the referendum and the debt service. General fund other includes things like local optional revenue. You'll remember that's a program that the state began a couple of years ago. It includes operating capital, and includes our building lease, includes our OPEB, and this also includes the new long-term facilities maintenance revenue. You'll also see that our community service fund comes in at about 2 percent and capital about 5 percent of the proposed levy. And then finally, everyone's favorite slide, these are the required Truth in Taxation breakdowns. So what you see here is a breakdown by fund in terms of where the general fund, community services, and debt services funds are. It also asks us to break it down by tax base in terms of referendum market value or net tax capacity. And then in one more way, which is voter-approved and other. At the end of the day, again, what we are asking for is approval of a $15,548,102.12 property tax levy for pay 2016. Again, that's a reduction of $31,931.16 compared to pay 2015, a percentage reduction of 0.2 percent. Val, did I miss anything? Okay, very good. What we'll do at this point is we'll have Val give the update on the budget, and then we'll take all questions together. And then we would have the opportunity for anyone from the public would like to speak about our proposed property tax levy.
Good evening. So as part of the Truth in Taxation presentation, we are required to talk about the budget. So we have taken the opportunity the last several years to just revise the budget because this is actually a really great point in time for that. We, as you are aware, have the audited financial statements, which you'll be hearing about a little bit later tonight. So that final information from the fiscal year is excellent to kind of start going forward. Our October 1st enrollment is no longer a projection. That's a very key date for us for several different reasons, and so now that we have that, we can project that going forward. We have settled employment agreements. This past year, we negotiated with the Northfield Education Association. And we usually have updated federal revenues by this time. We just probably three weeks ago got our final Title III allocation. So that does take quite a bit for everything to settle down and get our numbers. We do have some increased enrollment, which goes against everything that we've been projecting and hearing from the demographic study, but that's the way it's going right now. So as you can see, we're landing about 39.48, so about 18 pupils higher than we did last year. Again, not really sure if there's a reason behind it, but right now, that's where we're at with the students. And so when I put that into our projection model, if you recall, most of the revenue formulas are based on the weighted pupils. So this is what that looks like. You can see on the top there, the 2015-16 adopted. I had projected 4,222.9 weighted pupil units. And now with the revised budget and our October 1st enrollment coming in, I'm actually projecting 4,273.7, so about 50 more weighted pupil units than what I had projected in June, which is a pretty significant increase. I did have a pretty conservative kindergarten enrollment estimate because I was not sure how that would come in, and that did come in a little bit higher, so. So here is the revenue revision by our different sources. The property tax, as you can see, is no change. I'm certifying our 16 levy, which is revenue for 1617, so I've already got that number ready to go. Our state sources is where you'll see the most significant change. I've got a 1.5 million dollar increase there. Several different factors for that. The increased pupil enrollment. Each student generates $8,300, so that adds up to a significant amount of money. We also were approved for the ADSS funding. I did not include that in the adopted budget because we did not know if we were receiving that funding yet, so that is additional revenue. I think the total budget's about $490,000, and the state pays us about 55 percent of that, so that's what's included in there. I did also increase our special education revenue projection pretty significantly. We did come in significantly higher, ending fiscal '15, so I bumped that up. This is the first year of the new formula, so we'll see how that all plays out, but they have said that it's a hold harmless, so we're certainly not going to go backwards. So that is the bulk of where those increases are coming from. Our federal sources, as you can see, increased by about $46,000. We did actually have slightly higher Title I enrollment, mostly due to some carryover funds. We didn't necessarily just get an increase in our entitlement, but we will be spending a little bit more there. Everything else with the federal was actually pretty stable, so we're not seeing the sequestration that we have been in the past couple of years. And local sources basically stayed flat. So a total increase of about $1.6 million in the revenue. The expenditure revision, as you can see, is primarily an increase in the salaries and benefits. The settled agreements was a little bit higher than I had budgeted in June, and so that was about $1.3 million. We did also, our salaries and benefits budget ended higher than the budget that I had last year. And when I do it in June, I'm taking it off of what our budget is, and when that lands higher, then it kind of, it's a compound effect at that point. The purchase services went down a little bit, $26,000. We've had so far, a pretty decent winter, so we did decrease our utility, knock on wood a little bit.
Don't jinx us.
Decreased the utility bill a little bit because that has not come in where we had been in a few previous years where it was a little more significant. The supplies and other is actually just the supplies for the ADSS budget. There were no other changes to that. That was the other addition to the salaries and benefits that I forgot to mention. We did, most of the ADSS budget is salaries and benefits, so. So when I put that all together, the first column that I wanted to show was just the 14-15 revised budget, and then where we actually ended up landing for 14-15, which you will see in the audit presentation as well. And then where we were for 15-16 adopted, that was presented in June, and then where I'm proposing that we revise the budget too, so you can kind of see where the different changes are coming into play. The audited results, as you can see, the fund balance ended much higher than I had anticipated. So our unassigned fund balance started higher. So for 15-16, for the revised budget, I am still anticipating that we will spend down the fund balance slightly. Actually, it's a lesser spend down than I had projected in June. It's over $200,000 or so. So still ending with our unassigned fund balance, about $10.3 million. I had projected that we would end at about $10.5, so landing about 21.8 percent unassigned fund balance as a percentage of the general fund expenditures.
What our goal being 16?
Goal being 16, yes. So I will take any questions? Do you want to do the public comment first, or?
Yes, actually, before board members have an opportunity to make questions or comments, we would like to give any community members here who would like to make comments or ask questions, now would be your opportunity to do so. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Okay. So seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to ask board members if they have any questions or comments.
I think maybe someone asked this question when you made the presentation earlier, but in September, I've been hearing some people say, "My tax bill is going way down." And some people have been saying it's gone up a little. Some people have said it's gone up a lot. So is that primarily a function of the, of an increase in the taxable market value of the home rather than this? I mean, could you explain that a little bit?
Yep, absolutely. So your property tax statement is made up of our tax levy, the city, you know, the county. So there's various tax, you know, authorities that are coming into that, so it's dependent on if their tax levy increased or decreased because it's a compilation of all of them. And then it also is impacted by how your market value of your property relates to the market value of everything else in the county, basically. So there are some areas of the county where the market values rose significantly. So there are some areas of the county where the market values rose significantly, and those people are going to see an increase even though the districts decreased. And if your property value decreased, you're, you know, you're going to see a decrease in what you're paying. So it is very much, I do get several phone calls when the tax statements come out saying, "What's going on?" And my answer is always, you know, "You have to question the value of your home if you think that it's not accurate, and that's calling the county assessor's office." It's not something that I can help them with, unfortunately, but it is basically how your property value relates to everyone else in the counties, basically.
Thanks.
Yep.
Other questions? I had one question. Could you review how the special education formula changed? You alluded to.
Sort of.
Just in a quick.
In theory, yes, I can.
Yeah.
In 125 words or less.
Yeah. So the funding formula is actually the lesser of three formulas now. Prior to this, it was basically an expenditure where you got 52 or 57% of all your salaries and 40% of all your supplies. And, you know, it was kind of just some mathematically, you could estimate it pretty well, the main portion of it. The special ed excess cost is a totally different ballgame. So now there's three formulas. One is based on basically the old formula. That's one of the calculations you have to do. The second one is based on your disability level. So we have several different categories of disability, and each one is assigned a value. So the number of kids we have in there times that value that they've assigned, and then that sums up to a total. And then the third one is a compilation of a bunch of different special ed-related numbers. Some of it's expenditures and the total special ed aid for the whole state, and it's incredibly complicated, so I won't bore you with all those details. But basically, you run all three of those calculations, and whichever one is the lowest is basically the one you're going to get.
As opposed to the highest.
Yes, yes. They don't typically give you the highest. I do think it's interesting, all the work that we've been doing getting ready for the Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, which you're aware of. I don't have very much experience with a cooperative, and it's a slightly different type of accounting. And I emailed the special education funding director at MDE and just said, "Can you or someone in your department kind of walk me through how I can estimate the revenues for the cooperative so we can kind of have a game plan, cash flow, all those things?" And his response was, "Not really. Your expenses will be covered."
You can't own your own.
And that's really all I can tell you. So I'm not feeling so bad that I didn't really know how to calculate it yet this year, but I feel pretty confident that we're not going backwards because it's a hold harmless formula. So you'll at least, at a minimum, get what we got last year.
Well, that's an incredibly disappointing response. We know, we have the comfort of knowing that you are the one doing the estimate and you have an excellent track record of being able to do your best in projecting those numbers that change, you know, hourly.
Yep, pretty much.
One of the issues we're facing is kind of the person who had all the wealth of knowledge of years and years and years, George Hold, in special education, has now permanently retired. And so the people that they're bringing in are all fresh, eager, but not necessarily very skilled in terms of doing these pieces. So I can imagine the Val's call and having the person say, "Well, not quite so sure yet." So I think there will be a lot of us as we're working through processes for this next year, depending on all of us to kind of work together to figure out what this thing looks like. Because the person that would have been able to say, "Yeah, it works this way, this way, and this way, and here's how much money you'll get," is not there anymore.
So the comforting piece is obviously you're held harmless.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Okay. So any other questions for Val or Dr. Holme? Okay. You said we'll be approving this going forward in items for individual action, so thank you.
Excellent work.
We will now move on to Greenville Park's School Improvement Plan presentation. And just as a reminder to board members, their PowerPoint presentation was in the table file.
All right, Matt, is it the right arrow, the left arrow?
Right. Very good. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. We're here to present our Greenville Park School Improvement Plan and some of the things that are going on at Greenville Park that are working very well for us and some of the exciting things that you might not get a chance to see unless you were able to visit the building. Our school improvement plan obviously has already been passed on the school board and superintendent, and so you know the logistics of our goal setting and so forth. We continue to be challenged in areas of second language, kids in poverty, kids of color who are second language, kids in poverty, and some of the at-risk factors that are involved with helping students achieve at higher levels. You know, Greenville Park takes it very seriously. In fact, we believe that 100% of all kids can learn at high levels. And we're a little bit like the story of the old woman on the beach in the morning with the starfish, and she comes out every day throwing one starfish into the ocean, and the man comes up, he goes, "What are you, nuts? Are you crazy? How could you possibly make a difference? Look at all these starfishes." And she would respond by saying, "Well, it makes a difference to this one." And so because we do believe that all kids can learn, 100% of our kids can learn at normal rates and excel, we take it very seriously. But it doesn't mean we're serious people necessarily. We have fun. There's lots of joy at Greenville Park. We do a great deal to help children, families, faculty and staff feel like they're valued members of a learning community and that they belong there. So without any further ado, we will present three parts today: literacy, math, and climate. To introduce my team, Diane Torbenson is going to present our literacy component. I'll present math. And I've got Kelly Edwards and Amy Wilcom here this evening to present climate, and then we'll entertain questions at the end. Amy's one of our parents. Kelly's one of our EAs. They're both on our site council. They'll be doing climate, okay? So without any further conversation from me, Diane Torbenson.
Thank you. I have mic anxiety. Okay, great. Sorry, I have this problem where the mic's a little taller than I'd like. I'm coming, I'm Diane Torbenson, and I am a literacy instructional coach or MTSS coach at Greenville Park, and I'd like to highlight some things in the area of literacy today or tonight. We have, this slide is showing that we are really focusing on strengthening, or we always focus on strengthening our core instruction. And with that, our teachers are very deliberate in their planning in order to have children comprehend text at a high level, read fluently, and then use their early literacy skills as, such as phonics and phonemic awareness. My second focus up here is the teachers are empowered to post and communicate their learning targets, and with this, children can make an "I can" statement up in the upper corner. You see, "I can determine," or demonstrate my knowledge of author's purpose by reading a passage and answering questions. Once students are done with their learning, they're able to turn that around and make an "I can" statement, such as "I can write," "I can recall the supporting details," or "I can state the main idea." When teachers also increase that, the second one under there is increasing feedback cycle. And what this does is helps children to get right back on the right track and have more time practicing the skills and the strategies accurately. My third point under the strengthening our core is the PLC work. And in the PLC work that the teachers do every Wednesday for sure, but then throughout the whole school year, they're creating essential learnings and their pacing schedule, and they're working on common assessments. They collaborate with their colleagues and they share their expertise. And that's happening here. You see slides of two teachers teaching their, one is with a small group and one is a whole group, and then some children reading in partners and on their own. And my second slide is showing a celebration that we do every February as it is I Love to Read Month. And last year, our month-long celebration was called the ABCs of I Love to Read, and we had literacy events for each day of the month. In this slide, you see the calendar of our whole month last year in February. And then at the bottom, you'll see Northfield's Pacquiao Mater who came in as our guest author on V is for Visitor Day. So he was our featured author. And you will see the video clip. I think Matt's going to run that, but this is a culmination event of all of our I Love to Read last February.
Day A, and then 2D, we leave us Day B, and today's Day C. And so that's why I'm reading, because I think I'm Cowboy Dave. Thanks, thanks for Cowboy. I'm about to read to you this book, lovely book called "Bray for Dippin' Doofer Day."
Thank you. There was one little piece where Pacquiao started speaking just a little bit, but there was a flat moment in the song where that song ended and we went, but it's totally fine. This, our last slide on literacy, is something that highlights our professional development plan for this school year. We have a very special week ahead of us as all of the teachers of reading will be attending at some point during this next couple of days, sessions on guided reading or helping the struggling reader with a trainer and a consultant that will be with us from Tuesday to Friday of this week. She'll be with various groups at various times. We believe this training will help us to further strengthen our core reading instruction. We also have nine staff meetings devoted to literacy instruction this year. Each staff meeting is 40 minutes long, and it covers all of our topics, mostly dealing with core reading, but then there's some other elements of literacy too that we're highlighting. And these four books just show the four books, they're from Fontis and Pennell, and they're the books we're highlighting this week at our training, along with all year long and into the future. So thank you.
All right, so let's move on to mathematics. At Greenville Park, we're doing a great deal to strengthen the core instruction. You know, it used to be, a few years ago, and literally not that long ago, where predominantly, math was predominantly taught using the everyday math program, grade level instruction and so forth. And one of the things we learned from a consultant that worked with us was that, you know, unless we make mathematics available or accessible at a child's instructional level as well, they're not going to get the grade level materials. And so strengthening our core instruction has a lot to do with, you know, building that math fact computation and fluency, empowering teachers to, you know, increase that feedback cycle in guided math groups. And so the teacher might meet with groups of children at their instructional level while other children are doing either instructional level or grade level materials. There's a lot of use right now in mathematics in terms of the iPad and some of the applications that we can use at a child's instructional or ability level as well, where we work together to accomplish that goal. PLCs also are working real hard. It's a little bit easier, I think, in math to establish essential learnings when you have a program that has units and, you know, progressive approach in terms of rational numbers in this unit, geometry here, facts and this one and so forth. And we're doing a real nice job of establishing our essential learnings as well. Math workshop is probably two to three years new at Greenville Park where, you know, it's a little bit like our readers workshop model. It's a very good model where our whole group is taught a many lesson on a particular concept in mathematics. It's a 75 to 90-minute model, and then the teacher meets at the table with students in those concepts at their instructional level, three to four rotations in small groups where some kids are getting a guided math lesson, some students are working at independent workstations on iPads, math apps, fact fluency math journals, math games, extension projects and so forth. And then there's a whole group reflection. So math has really morphed into a grade level and instructional level program for us at Greenville Park, where typically everyday math is pretty much a grade level material for curriculum. The next piece is a real quick video on our Math Madness last year to kind of give you an idea of some of the excitement that we've generated around mathematics at Greenville Park. And Matt can pull up that video whenever he's ready.
I think that's good to have.
Now I gotta go back. There you go. One more, one more.
Cause that's what friends are supposed to do, oh, yeah. You'll always have my shoulder when you cry. I'll say goodbye. You can count on me, that one, two, three, I'll be there. And I know when I need it, I can count on you, that four, three, two, you'll be there.
So as you can see, we implement and encourage, you know, a rigorous curriculum while still having fun and encouraging kids to participate in that curriculum. Uh, again, with high expectations that, you know, a hundred percent of our kids can learn because when we, uh, you know, we give into that cacophony of voices that, uh, you know, tell us that, you know, it's unrealistic to expect that a hundred percent of our kids can be proficient. We've become that, um, that man on the beach instead of the old woman on the beach and we prefer to be the old woman. So, uh, our climate group will tell you now a little bit about our climate and, uh, some of the things that we do, uh, at Greenville Park with respect to helping all children feel like they belong.
You will? Okay. Alright, I'm Kelly Edwards. I am the PBISA at Greenville Park, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports Student Advocate. So, in Greenville Park, the climate at school, we are geckos and we love to learn. And some of the course, um, instruction that we use is responsive classroom. We use the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, character education and building wide expectations.
Good evening, I'm Amy Wilkum. I'm a parent, um, I have four children at Greenville right now. Without reading too much directly from the slide, we just, the emphasis at Greenville is on making everyone feel welcome and like they are part of a bigger group. Um, if you look at the website, you'll see that there, um, Mr. Craft has included a very nice description of why we're the geckos and how there are so many different kinds of geckos in the world and they're all different, but they're all united in their geckoness. If you, if you can see on your handouts or on the, if you can read it on the screen, we've got some quotes from some kids. Kelly and I went around and talked to different children about, how do you know you're a gecko? Do you feel like you belong here? And these are some of the really great responses that we got.
Um, at Greenville, we also, uh, award students at the end of each month for their goal-setting abilities. We set a goal, we persevere and we succeed. Sometimes you do it as a group, sometimes you do it individually and we've got it even as classroom goals. Um, we also recognize characters at Greenville and there's a few of them listed up here. We've got empathy and we've got self-control and forgiveness, kindness. So, um, kids can get recognized from their teachers through, um, through those too. And we've got a video which will explain it all.
Do you guys feel like you belong at Greenville Park?
Yeah.
How do you know you belong?
We have a lot of people who know. We have lots of people who love the place because you can remember our names and you can work with us for long and you can persevere.
I remember great teachers. I, especially some senior teachers who have been here a very long time. I remember mom teachers and, uh, I remember all of them.
Those who were in these are so fun. We have all these little places and, um, when you go to the gecko school, that makes me feel like, I feel like we, because, um, I get to see my friends get a little bit.
Uh, I just love working here for the community atmosphere and everyone working together to achieve success.
Do you like the school because my teacher's nice? And she's fun.
And do you feel like you belong at Greenville Park?
Yeah, yeah.
The students are kind, respectful and polite. They love to learn, they work hard and they care about each other.
Uh, I moved to this school two years ago and since I moved here, I've really loved it because everybody here is.
I think you should kindergarten and tall and have bad time coming to Greenville.
Third grade, you get to switch during science at the end of the day and you get to learn about space, animals, the local government, and ecmo- economic.
Everyone respects and belongs and there's a lot of great people that can be your friends and will always be here.
They have really good lunches, like on the tent. We have little buddies and we have sometimes like, um, special things going on, like we have a theater on the day or a crazy theater day.
I think that you just like it because they know what it's like to be a student and they have that experience to be a student and they have class.
They're awesome at Greenville and awesome people, um, and teachers. And there's no bullying.
And there's no what?
Bullying.
Bullying, okay.
I think this school is unique because all the teachers help us persevere and succeed. It's so sweet and they make learning so fun.
What I love about Greenville Park Elementary is how focused the staff is on student achievement. It's all about the kids. Do you feel like the teachers like teaching here?
Yeah, I feel like they really like it and feel like they belong.
How, how do you know they like it?
Well, they're really nice and they just smile a lot.
I love Greenville Park because of the kids. Every morning when I'm at school and the kids are coming in, they're so polite and friendly. They open the doors for other kids and other adults and then they come in with huge smiles on their faces and it just, oh, joy just floods out with me. So, these geckos at Greenville Park just make my day every day.
I like school because it's so fun and I get to learn. It's real fun having so many books to read. Yeah.
Well, there you go. Out of the mouths of babes, there's our testimony from Greenville Park. Any questions?
Excellent presentation, thank you. Um, questions or comments from board members? Rob?
My question is, how was it up on the roof?
You know what? Everyone should have slept out that night. It was really nice. It was really nice. Uh, it was great. And, you know, the funny part was that, uh, like straight through about 9:30, 9:45, cars would pull right up to the front door and honk just to see if I was in there. So, I, you know, I had this, uh, uh, work light shining on the tent so you could see my silhouette in there, see everybody in there. About 9:45, I, I got to go to bed and so it was, it was nice. I read a novel until midnight and fell asleep. I woke up because the bread truck was there. It's fun.
Um, other questions? Ellen?
So, I'm not sure if it's, uh, it's for you Dave or, or maybe Erin, but I was curious about, so, in looking at the, um, the site improvement plan, it seems like it's staying the course and as you said, you've got these ambitious goals and you're tying it in with the, the climate and the academic. But what I'm curious about is sort of the synergies between, last year we heard it with, tied with the community school and I knew we were going to do a different approach this year, but thinking about what synergies are you kind of gaining from both the Greenville having the community school? And then there was the Reading Rockets program over the summer. So, I mean, what you outlined is all the terrific things that the instructional staff is doing during the day, but I know that, yeah, there's more support there and it maybe, I don't know if this is an Erin question or a people's.
Well, let me just give a shot, cause I, I think a lot about this actually and I'll give you just a short answer because Erin's really got the, the, the best responses. She works with Laura and Catherine, you know, intimately. But I believe that if I were to nail it down to one thing, I believe that the community school has a value-added component in the sense that, um, kids go to the community school, uh, where they become competent in something. They become competent. They get some of the choices that they get for enrichment, uh, the, the faculty and the staff that works with the kids are encouraging and they, they're at their instructional level. And so they, they experience success in ways at the community school in things other than what they don't do well, you know, literacy and mathematical, logical kinds of things. They get, they get that too, but they have this whole other host of opportunities and especially, you know, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, where anyone can come for classes and so forth. But, uh, if you were to ask me what I think the big thing is, I think it's competence. And when a child gains or feels competent in one area, it gives them the energy to take risks in areas where they're not as proficient. And I would say, if you're gonna ask me that, if it were one thing, that's what I'd say this, but.
Sure. And Dave and I did talk about whether we should embed more of the community school into either one of our site improvement plans or how we should kind of make that look and knowing that we had shared the annual report with you recently and also that the community school comes with its own whole set of reporting and much like a site improvement, I mean, it's not called a site improvement plan, but we report on a lot of the same things that would fit into the site improvement plan. We kind of left it in that vein versus embedding it in here just to not make it overwhelming for each, either of the site improvement plans and to focus on some of the other work that was happening in each. Does that help answer where that?
Mm-hmm.
But I do think that too, also to the point, just, um, and you saw this in the annual report, this year number of students from Greenville that attended the community school makes it hard to say that that isn't having some sort of large impact. Um, and the fact that we're able to track them, you know, the large percentage of those that, I think it was 81% of those that came 30 plus times having significantly improved academic performance too, and we'll continue to track that over the, the next couple of years, I think speaks to just being able to build off of what's happening at Greenville throughout the day.
You know, another point would be that, you know, typically, you know, disenfranchised student populations, um, might typically say they don't feel like this is our school. Where they, they, I would say if you were to ask, well, I think you might have heard it, the, the community school adds that piece where they're able to say, you know, this is, this is where I go to school, this is my school. And a lot of our participation in the community school is, uh, I think you can really attribute it to that. They feel like they belong there. Yeah.
Great report.
Other questions, board members? No?
It's fascinating to see what the impact of the community school has. And, you know, I, I take cr- uh, value in that because it's in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
Which has nothing to do with all the work that's going on, but it's really a pleasure to read about and hear what's happening and, uh, to also hear and read what's happening in some of the other community schools around the state or particularly around the twins of the area. So, great report and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I just had a couple of comments. Um, I wanted to echo what Ellen said. I think to me, your greatest strength is that you have committed to these objectives and you're staying the course and particularly your climate goal, which is, which you're looking at as a five, five-year objective, but yet each year incrementally you're getting better. So, um, I think you guys do it extremely well and I think you have such a good, um, sense of how that whole student has to be educated and, and every aspect of, of student life. And for those of us who've had the honor of attending building-wide meetings, we, uh, actually smiled even broader when we saw the kids commenting about that. So, um, and then, um, I wanted to specifically thank Amy for coming because I don't remember the last time we've ever had a parent from a site council, um, um, committee come forward and, and talk about your work. So, thank you for doing that.
Well, Amy also commits to coming in and helping us with tutoring and she's in the building quite a bit, yeah. You know, that's actually the last piece that I wanted to say was that, you know, it's, you typically when you do school presentations like this, you know, it feels like it's about the school. But, you know, Greenville Park really has a great community, just overall community of, and a real commitment from everyone too.
What I want to mention that also, when I've been at the community school in the evenings, how many middle school and high school kids I see there as well. So, you're right, they just still think of it as their school. So, it's just wonderful. Now, I know it wasn't specifically part of your presentation, but I did want to ask you, and nothing, you know, no statistics or anything, but just how the fourth and fifth grade, um, one-on-one iPad initiative, how you're seeing that play out at, to this point in the school.
Well, you know, it used to be when you needed information, you had to go through the Dewey Decimal System. Now you have access to just about, well, a Google Plex of, you know, of information. And so, obviously there, there are benefits there. Uh, you know, the, when you look at, uh, a math, a typical math class now, it's part of, it's incorporated into, you know, that math curriculum and, and, uh, I would say that the big piece, especially with the one-on-one, is that, you know, I have a fourth grader at Greenville Park. And I'd say the big piece is, is that, that just the engagement. The engagement is, is there, you know, where typically you might have seen stations in reading or stations in math and that kind of a thing. Uh, and as a principal with new teachers and my previous positions in here, you know, the new teachers, teachers always say, well, I want you to observe when you come in to observe me, you know, how the kids are doing their stations and where they look really busy typically, you know, they're really not. They're talking about a dog or something like that. And, you know, now, when you look at iPhone or iPads and so forth and that implementation and you were to go look closely in terms of what they're doing, they're engaged. It's just, it's increased engagement. And I think increased engagement is going to increase achievement now.
Absolutely. Alright. Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, with, um, that report, we now move on to fiscal year 2015 audit. Here to present the district's audit results is Justin Fazey from Clifton Larson Allen. Oh, and as a reminder, there was, um, some additional, um, report documents in our table file.
Hello, thanks for having me. Craig Popegagen is still the principal on the job. He, uh, unfortunately had some other school board meetings this night, so he had some scheduling conflict, so I've been given the opportunity to come present to you guys. So, it's kind of a unique opportunity for me because I was, uh, out here for fieldwork involved with that and, um, with the financial statement drafting and preparation there and now, uh, tonight to kind of wrap it all up and present to the board here. So, kind of a unique opportunity for me, so I'm looking forward to it. So, uh, we'll just give you a brief overview of our audit results, uh, go through a few slides and then, uh, open up for any questions that you guys might have, so. Our audit opinion, we issued what is known as a clean audit opinion that, um, we feel the financial statements are presented correctly and fairly in, in, um, all material respects in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. Um, so, we feel good about where the financial statements are and the position that they're in. Uh, we noted no findings over internal control or financial reporting, um, no issues with any compliance with laws, regulations or contracts over the financial reporting either. So, we're good there. Our single audit procedures, um, just, uh, some additional internal compliance and control testing that we do, uh, over the federal dollars that the district receives. Uh, we tested our special education program and the child nutrition program. Uh, we noted no findings there, so we're, we're confident that they're in good shape there too. Uh, Minnesota legal compliance with, um, uh, some state statutes that are applicable to school districts, we noted no issues there either, so we're good with that. Our student activity funds, we had two, uh, two findings that we noted with, uh, over compliance with, with, uh, student activity funds. They have some additional requirements that are, uh, issued by anybody related to the accounting and controls over the, over the student activity funds. So, we noted two, two small issues there with, um, getting proper approval from the student and then, uh, uh, one of the funds entered into a contract with service. So, generally any contracts that, um, along those lines have to be entered in with the district instead of the student activity fund, um, entering into that contract. So, nothing too major there, just, um, some small items that we noted, so. One item that we did want to discuss a little bit about, um, has some pretty substantial financial impact, um, on the government-wide financial statements, so it won't be affecting your fund financials, but, um, Gatsby 68, um, this is some new, uh, accounting delivered down from the, uh, Gatsby Board, um, related to financial reporting and accounting for pension standards or the pensions, uh, related to TRA and PRA that the district is involved in. So, primarily it's, um, it's all in the government-wide financial statements, getting, getting the district's portion of their, uh, unfunded liability on the district's books. It's something that's always kind of been out there, not kind of, it's always been out there with, with TRA and PRA. Um, so it's nothing new, it's just the way that we, um, that we're accounting for it now. With the new guidance, they wanted each district to record their, their share of the TRA liability and the PRA liability on the government-wide statements. So, um, if you are looking at the government-wide statements, you'll see kind of a drastic drop in the, in the fund balance there. in the, in the fund balance there. So, it's not going to affect your fund financial statements, it's not going to affect how you contribute to the TRA, PRA pension plans, it's not going to affect your budgeting at all. It's simply just a financial reporting issue that we have to address now, that they issued some lovely new guidance, so I got to do a little extra work, and we got to add some more pages to the financials. So, Note 7 does cover some, some note disclosures related to the new pension standards, if you're interested in reading those. So, moving to the slides, most of our slides center on the general fund, since that's where the meat of the district is, and primary operations. So, our revenues for the general fund stayed fairly consistent. I believe they increased about $440,000 from the prior year. A large part of that is just due to, we had some ADM growth from the prior year. Our, we had about $920,000 excess of revenues over expenditures this year, which is right around approximately 2% of our revenue number. So, while $920,000 is a substantial amount, that, when we're dealing with 45, 46 million in revenues, it's, it's about, it's not huge. So, this slide just kind of represents our comparison of cash fund balance and state receivable. In the prior years, we've had some tax shifts with the state. Now, in fiscal 14, and finally, in fiscal 15, now that everything with the tax shift has gotten, gotten cleared up and moved through, we're kind of seeing that with the funding levels leveled off, we're seeing a pretty consistent balance with our cash, our fund balance, and our state receivables. So, now that, now that we're back to our 90-10 funding allocation, we can kind of see that these are staying consistent, and hopefully, going forward, they'll stay the same. These are just kind of our operating capital fund balance expenditure numbers. For the last few years, and prior years, we had some more substantial projects going on, so they're kind of sitting at about $630,000 for the current year. Our general fund revenue, kind of showing it how it's allocated from the different sources. The district is heavily dependent on our, on state funding and our property tax funding. So, with state and local funding, that makes up approximately 94, 95% of the, of the revenue, which is consistent to last, last year, we were sitting at about 94%. The local and state has kind of swung a little bit. In the current year, our locals gain a little greater percentages with, with the tax shift. Things getting cleared up now in fiscal 15. Some of the tax shift was still, had some lingering effects for fiscal 14, so. And then related to our expenditures, our, our allocation of expenditures remained fairly very stable. We're sitting at about 82, 83% for instructional support. I think we were at about 81 or 82 last year, so we're maintaining pretty consistent levels across all the different levels for our expenditures from the prior year. That was primarily what I had prepared for, for prepared comments, if you guys have any questions or comments for me.
Does anyone have any questions for Justin?
Ellen, I'm not sure if this is for Justin or for Val, but the findings of the student activities account, is that, seems like that's been a reoccurring finding, is that?
And that's an issue that you're going to find across almost every school district in Minnesota, and actually, in almost every state I've worked in over the last 35 years as superintendent. And typically, it's because of the fact that you have a lot more people that are involved in those parts of the process. And in Minnesota, as I understand it, whenever there's an expenditure in student activities, you really have to have a sign-off by a student that's, that has a partial responsibility for determining if dollars are going to be spent, as well as the sponsor. And so, that's a little bit different, and sometimes the coach will move forward with, with expending dollars, and may not be able to get ahold of a student to basically sign off. And so, that is usually the piece that we run into. It's not something that I have seen over the course of my experience, that you can totally control, and it's mainly because of the number of folks that are, that are kind of in that process. And yet, I don't, there's no mammoth in it, there's no intentionality in terms of doing something that's not correct, but it's just the fact that that's the way it plays out as, as people are spending dollars that have been accrued in particular activity counts.
So, it's a pretty good audit, if our finding is this.
Well, it's not pretty good. The audit we have is, is stubborn.
We did have one year, if you recall, there was one year where we had no student activity findings, and I think we had a party because of that, because that's very unusual, isn't it? I mean, it was...
But the number of student activity funds that you guys have, and in the different, different buildings at that, too, it's, it's, there's just a lot of hands at play, a lot of people involved, and not everyone's quite as familiar with, you know, the proper controls that need to go over this, and that are outside of the finance department. So, if the, the worst thing I have to say tonight is that you guys have a couple student activity fund findings where...
And let's make sure it's two minor student activity fund findings, to be really clear.
The important things are really clean audit, and no yellow book findings, whatever the yellow book is.
Yeah, so we have a, we have a clean audit, and over the single audit, too, where we don't have any findings related to that. So, that's, that's the, the big ticket items there. And to add on the student activity fund findings, there wasn't any proper, improper expenditures there, it's just getting the proper paperwork and sign-offs. So, there's no question that, you know, the, the funds were still used properly, it's just getting everything dotted and crossed, so.
May I actually add on to that? I'm going to lower this quite a bit. We did actually change the process this year. All of the high school disbursements actually had been processed in the high school office. So, I never actually saw any of them. We just did an internal audit annually, just to make sure things were appropriate in addition to what Clifton-Larson Allen provides. But we did change the process for this school year, so now, all of the student activity disbursements come through my office. And for those of you who don't know, I do look at every single purchase order and sign off on it prior to it being paid, so I am reviewing for those and sending any back. That was only happening on the middle school and elementary ones prior to this year. So, hopefully, that will not be a finding next year, but it is a work in progress, and primarily, our biggest struggles during the summer. You know, the coaches are getting stuff ready, and for the sports, and all those sorts of things, and the students aren't, you know, coming back just yet for that. So, that is our primary area where it's the most difficult. But we are changing the process, so hopefully, that'll be a little bit better going forward.
Thank you, Val.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions for other, Justin or Val? I just want to, oh, Matt, go ahead.
If you think about it, on a 45-plus, how close every year we come in these audits, it just goes to show how awesome Val is, and I make sure I tell her that regularly. But it's her commitment to detail, her making sure that she works with people, so she understands what's going on, what you just described, she understood the exact process, and the people involved, and how we can make something better. So, Val just deserves a tremendous amount of credit, because we get a, we have had a clean audit finding for as long as anyone can remember, right? And I think a significant portion of that is because Val does the internal control, she makes sure that people follow the process in the appropriate way, and she's kind about it as well, which is a really good piece. We're very fortunate to have her leadership as part of our district services leadership team, so congratulations again, great job.
Absolutely. Yes, we echo that, Val, and to your, those on your team as well. We know you have a strong team behind you as well, so thank you. Okay. So, board members, we will approve the official audit later in the, oh, I'm sorry, no.
No. Thank you, Matt, for saying that, but I have written, I appreciate the fine audit report presented by the auditor, who is really the messenger. Credit goes to Val for a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. As I said, we will approve the audit, officially approve the audit in items for individual actions, so we'll move on to another item for report, which is the Highway 246 update. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, and actually, I think Matt and I will tag-team this one a little bit. You know, let's go back 12 years, and the opening of the middle school. And when I first came to the district in end of June, beginning of July of 2004, we had a stop from Jefferson Parkway onto Division, but we had no stop between, well, there was no stop from anywhere south of the middle school until you got to Woodley. So, the initial piece that we worked on way back then was trying to get some action to begin to reduce the, the speed of the traffic. And at that time, the only thing we were able to get done was to implement a four-way stop at the corner of Division and Jefferson Parkway. And that didn't even happen until we got people in the community, and our two legislators at the time, Ray Cox and Tom Neville, to step in with, with the Department of Transportation to actually put pressure on them to get something done. Since then, over the last decade, we've been talking to parents in our community who've had concerns, we've been talking to the city, and we've been talking to the Department of Transportation. And we've not really gotten much action. We've had several opportunities, or several times, when they have put in, or put out the speed cords so that they could count traffic. In every occasion, when they have done that, the response back has been, well, yes, you have a lot of traffic for about a half an hour in the morning and a half an hour in the afternoon, but that's not enough traffic to make any changes in a state highway. So, we were, I think, very amazed this fall, as we saw some shifts happen, and again, very pleased by the efforts of everyone to kind of come together to put pressure on the Department of Transportation. And again, I think Mar and Brenda and other folks with the Coalition, I think Susie Nacazian with the city, I think the city folks, in terms of the city engineer's office and whatever, have all kind of worked to see if we can't actually get something to happen. As a short time ago, as two months ago, we got a additional email from the Department of Transportation, who said, yes, we've checked everything again, and no, we're not going to do anything. We're going to keep the speed limit the same, we're not going to put in any additional signage, whatever. But recently, we had a very different message coming from the Department of Transportation. And that message was really all about the fact that they are prepared now to identify a standard school zone, and really to have that school zone begin south of the middle school, and go, and extend all the way to north of the high school. And that will be a tremendous change. We believe at this point, according to our discussions with Dave at the, at the city engineer's office, that the signage will be a 30 mile an hour limit. They are still trying to determine, is it going to be 30 miles an hour when children are present, or is it going to be 30 miles an hour all the time? And they really have not identified yet, forcefully, the actual beginning and end points. Initially, they're going to let the state put up the initial signs. So, the initial signs will be strictly just a metal sign with a steel post that will identify those zones. But there are going to be other pieces that are going to come along with that, as the city takes a hard look at where they want to go from here. I, I guess the piece that I'm really pleased with is that I think we're beginning to develop some momentum to take this to the next step. And again, appreciate all the work that everybody has done up to this point. I know, Matt, also, you have done, reached out, and why don't you talk a little bit about, I know you've got a couple different meetings set up here in the next month or so, to work with different folks on this particular issue.
Sure, you know, we have worked with a number of different people. In fact, it goes back to my first specific involvement with a meeting that we had with Susie Nacazian, and some other folks from the city. Dave Bennett, the city engineer, has really been a great partner, very interested in listening to what we have to say, because the thing that we have to be really clear about is, the school district has no jurisdiction over any of these thoroughfares, it's, it's not under our purview. So, we can advocate, but honestly, we have other people who come to the table, like Mar and Brenda in the 246 Solutions Group, the city writing a letter of support to make sure that the school zone happened. But Susie and myself, and a handful of other people, we stood out on the corner of Division and Jefferson last June, and with two MINDOT engineers, and had them watch, and we asked some pretty pointed questions about, would you let your child cross the street? And I won't reveal their answers to that particular piece, but it did spawn another study, which Chris points out, was not as successful as we had initially, anyway. We've met with Dave Bennett, and another person who's been really instrumental, this is Chief Police Monte Nelson, he's attended as many of the meetings as possible, and again, basically trying to problem-solve for both the short-term and the long-term strategies. Mar, and as she mentioned in her talk before, she and I, and Brenda, and Greg Gellino are meeting on Thursday to talk about some other issues in terms of the middle school traffic, so that's an important piece. Dave and Monte and I are scheduling another meeting here soon, just now that we have the change in the state's approach. I think the other thing that's important to remember from the school perspective, is that we will ensure that as we move forward with the facilities planning, the master facilities plan, anything that would be resulting from that facilities plan, any kind of bond question, or anything that would involve a school along this corridor, we would take it as the opportunity to open up further discussions about how does the traffic plan with the buildings that range in this corridor. So, that's a piece that we can control, we will make sure that we do that. I think a key piece is, as Chris said, I think the city is going to determine in January, looking at possibly in front of the high school, or at least within this corridor, in front of the three main buildings on this side of town, potentially a solar-powered flashing light system, similar to what they have on Maple, in terms of visibly, so we think that that would be a real possibility. We also know there's some discussions, I think Dave and the city have had some discussions about even a lower speed limit in front of Greenville Park. So, this, we're talking about the one specific piece that everybody has seen for a long time, and I just, I think that we've been advocating for common sense solutions to this for years. And if you think about, can you think about not having a four-way stop at Jefferson and Division? I just could not fathom that when people told me that was the case. But it's when people like Mar and Brenda Shelby step up to help the cause, we think that that's really important, because when the school is on the same page as the city, and we have community members coming forward, that's where we get action. And so, we really appreciate everyone stepping forward to do those kinds of pieces. So, again, a key thing as we continue the discussions, we have confirmation that a school zone will happen, we, we don't have all the details yet, and anything that we've learned working with the state is that the proof is always in the pudding, right? And so, we will, I will be interested to see those signs go up, we'll be interested to see the next step, we'll be interested in talking about what other ways can we help facilitate the conversation about safe passage through this corridor, and just reminding that we continue to provide bus service to students just on the other side of the street from their school, because we've known that that's the safest way for kids to get to school. I think most people would say, doesn't make much sense that you, you can't, but that is what we can control, and we have always attempted to make sure that we can put into place things that make our students safe, under the things that we can control. So, we look forward to further discussions, we look forward to pushing the envelope further, and another great opportunity to talk with the city, and continue to partner with them. The city has been great. Dave Bennett, I've been very impressed with, he's had some really good ideas. You all know Monte Nelson, and just, we're so fortunate to have him as our Chief of Police. He's very serious about making sure it's safe for kids. So, we've got the right people in the right place, we're all singing the same song, and now I think we've got some people who are listening to it, so.
I think a couple of other pieces, and again, I think it is going to be very important that we continue to really include the community members, as well as the city and the police department, because as we look at some of the solutions that are above and beyond this kind of first step, we get into solutions that are much more expensive, and people are really going to have to think about how they really work. And as part of that, I think there are going to be some discussions around what should also be happening with Jefferson Parkway, because there's some real issues there that are tied to the fact that they've put this median strip in, which was purposefully to slow the traffic down, but which makes it extremely difficult to work things out, and really limits the kinds of turn lanes and other options that are available there. I think another piece that, that we're really going to have to take a hard look at is if there are solutions that are trying to... are solutions that are trying to find a pedestrian or bike-safe way of getting across 246. Another piece we're going to have to really take a hard look at is, will 246 continue to be a state highway in that area? And those discussions actually go back several years when the Chamber Board and the Chamber Transportation Subcommittee was taking a hard look at the concept of when County One is redone, which is supposed to be now in 2018, that they might look at the possibility of abandoning 246 at One and have people turn onto One and have 246 then come over and go onto Three. That would change the whole situation in terms of who's responsible for that. And obviously, there are lots of issues there, because that's a chunk of asphalt and so on that has to be worked through. I think we also have to take some really hard looks at what potential options there are in terms of actually trying to get students across the road, and knowing the potential positives, but the potential safety issues around any kind of a crosswalk across that area. And thinking about that part, I know people have talked about things like an overpass or a tunnel, and knowing all the different pieces that work there. But I think the good thing is, at least at this point, I think we've got a number of people trying to think together about what makes sense. So, I guess we're just very pleased with the fact that the first step is getting taken after all this time. And everything that I know as we've talked to Dave, the indication was, he thought that the state might even have the signs, the initial signs up by the end of the calendar year, because again, it's not a big deal. We're just driving the stake in the ground and putting the sign in.
And we are already working on some appropriate plans for communicating this. While it probably isn't our responsibility, we think it would be wise for us to use Skylark to get out information to families who have students going to school in that corridor, just remind them, specifically reminding the high school students about the speed in that corridor. So, you know, we will be working, once we know that the signs are in the ground or will be in the ground, we'll start working on our communication strategy via Skylark to let families know, "Hey, there's going to be a change in the traffic, you need to know this, we want to make sure that everyone understands it before it starts." And we'll leverage Principal Lear and his team to ensure that all of the young drivers in this building know it as well, so.
So, any questions that you have right now about where we are?
Well, I didn't have a question, I just had a comment. I really want to commend you for your work. I called MINDOT when we broke ground on the middle school, and I said, "Well, what do you plan to do about these kids who are walking?" And I thought it was a no-brainer, we're the grown-ups, we're supposed to protect the kids, and that should be the first issue. And I couldn't believe the resistance. I was receiving from MINDOT about any safety measure whatsoever, although, as though it were going to completely hogtie the economic survival of Northfield if we were to change anything in front of the middle school. And I was very disappointed in our state in MINDOT, frankly. I was, I asked about a tunnel, I asked about an overpass, no, kids might smoke in the tunnel. I thought, "Well, that's small potatoes compared to a fatality or an injury." And I have myself seen people be injured. I live near there, and a friend of mine was in an accident that, just by virtue of dumb luck, didn't involve four more student fatalities. So, I can't believe it's been 12 years and we're still fighting this issue. So, I really want to commend you for your dedication. Good luck to you, and I'm all, I'm 100% behind this, so we've got to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Jeff?
Thanks for being an advocate on this, and we've been working on this for years, obviously, and I don't think with MINDOT, unfortunately, that common sense is often that common, so I think you just have to keep putting on the full-court pressure and do the best you can, and don't quit until you get the result you're looking for.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We'll move on to the next item that was added as part of the Table File. Dr. Richardson will give us an update on Every Student Succeeds Act, which is the new federal education bill that was signed by President Obama on December 10.
Yes. And I want to keep this very short, because there will be, there's going to be a lot to come. And, you know, it's kind of dribbling out, obviously, it's a 1,200-page bill. And so, again, trying to get to the details of what's going to happen is not going to be an overnight piece, and things that even as we're looking at it, we're finding new, kind of new pieces every day. Again, Every Student Succeeds Act, now deemed ESSA as opposed to NCLB, is the new law of land. However, it will take several years for it to get fully implemented. So, the things we're going to see initially will be that in 2016, the calendar year, you're going to see that anything that has been the current structure, whether it's a current state plan, whether it's existing waivers, et cetera, et cetera, all disappear August 1st of 2016. Beginning in the 2016 year, we're going to see some other things happen right away. One of them, which is going to be really interesting, which is that local education entities, in other words, school districts, will have to notify parents of their right to request and receive information about the professional qualifications of their student's classroom teacher. So, where we will not have highly qualified teachers anymore that we have to identify to the feds and the state, parents now would have the opportunity to say, "Well, what's the educational background of this, my teacher, and what, you know, what level of degree do they have, and are they licensed in their particular area, et cetera?" Good thing is, I think we are about 99% there. I think we only have one teacher that continues in terms of a kind of a special waiver strategy, and that is Ga with our Chinese program. We have some others that come on maybe for a little while, but then come off. So, beginning in 2017, 18, basically, the states are going to have to create new plans to send to the feds, and those will have to be reviewed and approved by the feds. But the vast majority of the teeth that used to be in plans under No Child Left Behind have disappeared. So, the things that are really important for us to realize is that AYP is dead, we're not going to be looking at annual yearly progress, and the idea that 100% of the kids in a certain amount of time are going to all be proficient. We are seeing the end of any kind of federal sanctions. So, the, any kind of sanctions that we used to have before the waiver, where we had to basically allow students to go to a different building, or allow students to get supplemental tutoring, support, et cetera, through No Child Left Behind, and actually take money away from a building to pay for supplemental services, those pieces are gone. If we go beyond that, basically, what I think you're going to see with this new plan in place will be a real focus on trying to ensure that we continue to have challenging academic standards, but those academic standards will be created at the state level and not the federal level. And in terms of, the one other piece that really the feds have retained control over is saying, "You will have a test in every grade, three through eight, in math and reading, and once per level in science." Beyond that, however, there's some twists for the 10-12 program. So, where before we had to offer an MCA-type test in 10 through 12 in all of the areas, it now appears that there may be another alternative, which is to give an assessment that creates a measure of college and career readiness instead. Now, of course, the interesting thing for us at this point is, just at the time the state has decided not to fund ACT anymore, the feds are now offering the opportunity that we could have used the ACT to create an ongoing measure of college and career readiness at high school level on a test that kids probably would actually try to do, because the biggest concern I think all of us have is, MCA's at the high school level, frankly, there's no motivation on the part of kids to do well. There's so, if you talk about validity and reliability for that test at the high school level, it's almost nonexistent. The flip side is, if we'd have stayed with the ACT for everyone, now that may change the discussions that are happening at the state level if that happens. So, that'll be the, another piece that we'll be taking a look at. As I said, a core piece is, the sanction pieces are gone, and what the state will still be required to do is to create a measure that will allow them to identify the five, the lowest 5% of schools in the state in terms of the highest level of need, and basically to offer them additional support and additional programming. But the things you used to remember hearing about No Child Left Behind, where they talked about closing the school or firing all the teachers and the principal and reconstituting, all of that is gone. So, the states now are able to figure out what makes the most sense. There also will be a new early childhood component to ESSA. But the interesting twist there is it isn't administered by the Department of Education, it will be administered by the Department of Health and Human Services. And it's at $250 million, which is basically a drop in the bucket in terms of being able to actually provide significant additional support. Another piece that's there is, we're going to continue to see Title II funding for professional development. But what's going to happen with the new law is, over a couple of years, we're going to see a shift in how the funds are distributed. So, right now, basically, funding is distributed, 65% is based on the number of students in poverty that you have in the district, 35% is on student population overall. So, as you can imagine now, you know, again, the majority of title funding goes to those districts that have really high concentrations of students in poverty. But there's enough with that 35% to make sure other districts get some. With the new law, it will eventually shift to 80% based on poverty and 20% based on overall student population. So, what will be happening is, the amount of money coming through Title I is going to significantly reduce for districts that don't have high levels of poverty. And so, again, it will push even more money into the core cities, more money into Minneapolis and St. Paul, and a few other districts that have really high poverty levels across the state. So, we're actually going to see the ability for us to support or operate with that piece going down over the next few years. And then probably the only other piece that probably is worth mentioning is, we've talked about in fact, in the past, the concept of maintenance of effort, you know, where you were basically told you had to make sure that you continued to spend as much money as you'd spent in the previous year for special education and title services from year to year. And if you didn't, you had to figure out a way to put those dollars in. That did not go away. And so, we're going to continue to see that as a problematic piece, especially in those times where maybe by using more technology or using other strategies, we could actually have reduced the cost of the program, so we could have spread it over more activities. We're still going to be locked in with those particular maintenance of effort pieces. I think the other biggest push is, we're really going to see a lot more, again, coming back to local districts. So, I think you're going to see the state being the driver, and there's multiple places in the law that says the state has to meet with and talk to and work with local school districts to talk about how this thing is going to play out. So, it is, that part is, I think, a very positive thing. So, is it perfect? No. Is it better than No Child Left Behind? Absolutely. And I think the key piece is, stay tuned, because as we learn more about it, there'll be more and more information that we'll be sharing as we actually nuance out the details of that 1,200 and some page bill. But those are kind of the things that are there, and so, the new, we can no longer talk about No Child Left Behind, we're going to talk about ESSA. Questions?
Board members, questions? No.
This is not our issue, but I'm wondering if the state, Department of Education, is in a position to be able to do the next step?
Well, it's tight. You know, I mean, that's, that's the issue. If you look, if you look at the funding available from the Department of Ed, it is slim. And so, mainly, a lot of the people that used to be there that helped support schools in terms of curriculum and instruction and so on, all those positions are long gone. And most of the funding, most of the positions that are left are in compliance. So, it's either special ed compliance, or it's title compliance. And so, I don't necessarily see those monies flooding back to us. And right now, we really don't know whether there will actually be any new money that comes from ESSA more than what we were getting in No Child Left Behind. What we do know absolutely for sure is, as they shift the calculation for how money flows for title, that we actually probably will end up on the short end of the stick, because it will tend to push more money towards those districts that have 50% or more of students in poverty. And it's been a limited amount of money anyway, so this will make it even tighter.
Any other questions or comments? Appreciate.
So, I don't know, I don't, we should have a party, I suppose, because, hey, it's, because, I mean, the rabbit is, it is better. But it, you know, I think the jury is still out as to how much better it's going to be. But what we know is, our fate will be more tightly aligned to what the state decides to do than having it controlled from Washington. Okay? Thank you.
Stay tuned. Okay. So, that completes our items for discussion and or reports, so we'll move on to several items for individual action. The first item is the fiscal year 2015 audit. The motion is to accept the 2014-15 audit report as presented. Your motion to approve moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. Is there any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our second item is the certified final 2015 payable 2016 tax levy. The motion is to certify the county auditors the 2015 payable 2016 final certified net tax levy in the amount of $15,548,102.12. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Ellen, second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any questions or comments? It's on the motion? Okay. All those in the favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our third item is the fiscal year 2015-16 general fund budget revision. That motion is to approve the revised 2015-16 general fund budget as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Margaret, second. Second by Ellen. Any questions or comments on the revised general fund budget? None? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our fourth item is, and in your packet, board members, is revisions to school board policy 412 expense reimbursement. Dr. Richardson?
And I just would share briefly, then, I know that Matt and Val have worked on this piece, but I think the key thing here is, this is really about simply making some minor non-substantive changes in the policy itself to make sure we make it very clear that the superintendent designee will develop procedures to accompany the policy for timely reimbursement. And then what Val has worked on is to develop a more comprehensive policy for the procedures for how reimbursements occur, so that it's really clear to all of our staff members and administrators as to exactly how reimbursements will be handled. And so, my encouragement here is, again, you typically do not approve, you do not approve procedures. Procedures are basically what we created administratively based on your support of a particular policy. So, again, our encouragement is for you to make the minor modifications in policy 412 so we can move forward with implementing the new procedures that would go with that.
Okay. Board members?
Do you have any?
Is there?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we're good.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve revised school board policy 412 expense reimbursement as presented? Moved by Noel, second? Second by Margaret. Is there, are there any questions or comments on the policy revision?
I have a question.
Rob?
So, one of the things I think we do at the organizational meeting is set the mileage rate. So, that would now go into the procedures? How would that, where would that go?
Val, you want to?
Yeah. We actually just follow the IRS standard mileage rate. And so, whatever they have come out with is what we match automatically. So, it's not, it's not set by the school board. Does that help though?
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a number of personnel file, items in the table filed to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen, second? Second by Jeff? Any comments or questions?
I just wanted to add, Dr. Richardson had acknowledged, but again, to say here, the James Gang Wrestling Club for their donation of over $17,000. And they're using that to purchase middle school wrestling mat hoists. And no doubt, that amount of money reflects a whole lot of hard work for a lot of people. So, that's, we appreciate it.
So, we have a motion and a second. No other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to items for information, the enrollment report. Dr. Richardson?
Okay. I would just share with you, this is the first time since I have been here that our total enrollment as of December 1, or as of any month during the year, has reached 4,000 students. And so, I think Matt and I still have a lot of faith, faith in Hazel, but it's that, it may take a year or two before we get to the place where I think Hazel's telling us we're going to hit. And in the meantime, as Val indicated, having a few more students at the amount per pupil is a very good thing and really helps us in terms of that piece. So, you'll see that overall enrollment is there. You'll see that enrollment at all three elementaries is staying very solid, as is the enrollment at the middle school. As we always find, as we get toward the end of the first semester, the enrollment at the high school tends to go down a little bit. But again, nothing beyond what we would normally have. And again, if you look on the other side and you're looking at kind of where are we, as we've kind of talked before, we tend to look at classrooms where we have 27 or more students in an elementary classroom. At Greenville Park, we continue to have three sections that are 27, 28, or 29. At Sibley, we continue to have three sections that are 27, 28, 29. And at Bridgewater, we have three sections that are 27, 28, 29. So, and again, each of those buildings has 23 or 24 sections of students. So, we're continuing to be able to maintain a really good place for us to be in terms of the overall enrollment. And our enrollments at the primary level continue to provide the opportunity for us to give more individualized support for kids.
Is there any questions or comments on the enrollment report? Announcement about future meetings, our first meeting of 2016, Monday, July 11. Just a reminder that we'll begin with the organizational board meeting at 7:00 PM followed by the regular school board meeting. And our second meeting of the month will be Monday, January 25, in the high school media center. So, with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
Moved by Noel, second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.